Just the three of us. All right, keep rolling now. So I'll call this meeting of the Lake County E nine one one Authority to Order at ten eleven hours. Does anyone have any changes to the agenda?
Nope.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve today's agenda.
So moved.
Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all in favor.
Aye.
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 Agenda is approved. Move on to public comment. Any public comment in the room? Online?
No, sir.
All right. Okay. Well, thanks for your patience, everyone. It's just gonna be the three of us today. And so we'll start off with Director Reports. I'll kick that off with just an update on the recent meeting with the architects. We, they were in our county facility on the thirty for thirty first, going through mainly talking through GL renovations, SO, and it's gonna be hard to ignore dispatch. So there's gonna most likely be, there's, it's gonna affect dispatch one way or the other. Noise, movement, temporary location. We're not sure exactly how that's gonna look quite yet. So we're just, I guess, waiting for initial drawings to see how it's gonna affect dispatch, but just wanna keep that on everybody's radar that there's gonna be some movement change there. Chief Daly's not here. Claire's not here either, but she prepared a memo that I'll pull up and read for her updates. So Claire had an update that she wrote out as DOLA has approved our twenty twenty five budget, and that is uploaded into the portal. Lake County Government has completed the twenty twenty three audit, and the E nine one one information has been sent to the state. The audit findings are in the packet for reference. All IGA payments have been received and processed by the Treasurer's Office with, I believe, one payment still hasn't been processed yet, but they've all been received at this point. So we're good there on receiving those, so thanks to everyone. Tower project is progressing smoothly. Per an email from Rich Mum on one six twenty five, the generator is working and testing every Tuesday automatically. There may be need to tweak, for some tweaks on the generator regulator, but that is being coordinated between Pharrell and OPSC. Claire speaks in abbreviations. I don't, I'm not sure, Office of something.
Something to do with the radios.
Okay.
I don't remember exactly what it stands for, but.
But that's being worked out. The microwave link between Haggerman and Letville is working with no issues. And the Motorola DTR digital equipment is ordered. No delivery date at this time, rough estimate is April.
Office of Public Safety Communications.
Thank you. That was close. I got Office. Last county responsibility is to fill the propane trench, which is challenged with this time of the year with the ice and snow, but it will be complete, completed when the conditions allow. I have the recommendation of maybe putting a Claire handprint in that. She's done this whole project, so she can put Claire was here. And she, she ran with that tower thing to get that completed, so. And then on the OEM side of things, she had some feedback on recent calls from OEM. Support on incident for dispatch. So Paul, I guess this looks like a note for you guys. While OEM is a public safety department, they are not first responders. Lately, when receiving dispatch calls, it seems to be under the assumption that OEM is already aware of the call and monitoring. This is not always the case. When calling Claire or other OEM staff, please provide a description of the call and the location. Which is fair.
Did she talk to you about that? They're just calling her and being like, hey, very much, we're supposed to meet a scene, and that's it. And she's like, what scene? What's happening? What's going on? She has no idea. She's out of town, wherever it is, so if they could just pencil out the scenario before they tell her what's going on. Or any, anyone for that matter, if they're calling, they're calling me, same, same thing.
Cool. This is being recorded. Claire's gonna listen in and catch up, so if she has any follow up on any of that, she'll, she'll reach out to whoever she needs to. Or if you guys have questions for her about any of those items, please reach out to her. Jeremiah?
I don't have anything that's not on other agenda items.
Okay, perfect.
Me either.
Okay, let's, let's keep rolling then with new business and discussion. We'll start off with item A, discussion and consideration for the twenty twenty five pay scale and incentive program for the Lake County Mercy Communication Center. And so we'll pull up a presentation Jeremiah and I worked on, so everybody can see it.
You'll have to share first, yeah?
Oh, okay. I, I definitely don't have a license to, to write this.
Yeah, okay.
In my shit.
Now, now if you pull up the, the power bar.
You wanna, you wanna drag?
I think it was the E nine one one links email, but was it the one you went to earlier? Hold up.
Oh, go back to that. That was that links. If you go back to that email. Yeah, nine one one links as well as that. That's, that us, yeah. Yeah, speaking to payroll and signs for twenty twenty five beyond. Yep, so I appreciate the conversation around this last time. I do think this is something that whole board should be involved in in making a decision. Jeremiah sent this out yesterday, so everybody can get eyes on it. I mean, I was able to speak to Claire for a little bit. Initial views is she'd like a little more time to really digest all of this, however, she's good with the initial numbers being presented, so we can have some movement and making sure we're not holding back the pay potential for what we budgeted for in twenty twenty five, so this represents what was submitted to DOLA. But then now we're gonna get into the weeds a little bit on what this actually looks like to put in place. Just for a little bit of background, the incentive and retention pool is based off of something that I created for the Sheriff's Office. And with dispatch being underneath the Sheriff's Office for so long, this was adopted for them also, but now in transition. This is giving us a starting point that, this is what was created, and happy to hear input on how we can adjust this. But we can talk through first the incentive side of things. And that's what this chart represents. So we, we put in names, initial salary, estimated pay for the vacancy positions, just to kinda get a rough idea of what total cost would end up being. So that, that first column would represent, is it column?
Yeah.
Column on salary would represent that, again estimations for the vacancies. The other ones are the actual twenty twenty five pay scale for each one of those people. The first four columns in the incentives side of things, as you can see, would be post-secondary education, so associates, bachelors, masters, and then a PhD level. So you, you receive your highest level. So if you have a bachelor's degree, it's an additional three percent on top of your base salary. And if you end up receiving a master's degree, then you're bumped up to the four and a half percent. And then after that, those are other categories that benefit the dispatch center quite a bit, but they're beyond the job description. So the first one is being a training officer or CTO, as we call it in dispatch, as a communication training officer. And, and that's where you receive certain training, you have certain level experience where we believe that you can help the next person in line. And then they provide that training to create the next dispatcher. And so that is extra work, extra responsibility, and, and it's set at an additional two percent. Besides the education, these, all these can be accumulated, as you can see in some of these different categories. The next three are Spanish specific, in, in being able to assist the dispatch center with those abilities, which I can use Paul in this room as an example. Her entire time with the Sheriff's Office and in dispatch is something that we help, that she's been able to help with translation services. Spanish is obviously the most prominent second language in our county. And, and what we're looking for here isn't really to have, to be a certified translator where your translation can help in a court case. Like that, we're not looking for that. We have somebody on the phone who's bleeding, needs immediate help, and they're speaking Spanish. Paula help us, and it's very beneficial. And so we've split that up into three different categories of speaking, which can also be like slash listening, writing and reading. And the most valuable of those would be the speaking, that's why it's a little higher percentage. And then one thing we've discussed is having a night shift differential, where, where we add two percent for that. Now, back to how this can be accumulated is if we look at Daniela, for example, she has an associate's degree and fluent in Spanish, as I believe that was her first language. Is that fair to say for Daniela? So she's pretty, pretty good with that, and you can see how that accumulates for a total just over three thousand dollars on top of her base salary, which gives a total salary in the, in the far right column. This is fairly accurate. The one thing I threw in there is because it's part of the job requirement for the director position was the bachelor's degree. So even though that position's not hired, this kinda gives us a rough idea of what this total cost would be at the end of the year. Now, so to backtrack a little bit, I appreciate HR Finance, payroll personnel being here today. Thank you guys for coming, because I think you guys can really help us work through some of this to make sure that we're all on the same page. So we come up with this, and you're like, whoa, it won't work that way, or maybe this way. So we'd really like to hear your input on there. So one of the questions I had on this for you guys was on the retirement side. So we budgeted for the retirement, which we use as an estimation of six percent on top of base salary, because we have that flexibility of what people can select from, you know, from three to nine percent, and so we average at six. Would, would incentive pay in that GL code, would retirement money be moved on that one?
All funds, all wages paid are subject to retirement withholdings, absolutely.
So yes, okay, so it's included in that. Are we missing anything? On that bottom right chart, I should point out. So that top line of the seventeen, just shy of eighteen thousand dollars, that would be the total. Again, if you follow the right column, second to far right column, all the way down, the incentive totals, we're at seventeen thousand seven hundred ninety five dollars. And then applying FICA, Medicare, retirement, unemployment, are we missing anything there?
All of the deductions. So there are employer side costs to all of the health insurance, dental, vision.
And that applies to incentives too? All same? Okay, so we need to add that in there.
Well, and those, those amounts are actually set amounts, so they're not based like retirement.
It's not a percentage.
It is not a percentage.
So this doesn't, we shouldn't include that in here. We've already accounted for each individual for their health insurance.
If you've already accounted for the health insurance, dental and vision, then, then yes, you would not need to account for it again, because it's not a percentage base, it's a flat fee.
So, couple notes Jeremiah wrote here. Yep, so we got that one. Yeah, and part of the discussion today, I was hoping before on that side of things, was the, do we wanna place a cap on this? We don't have a, a whole lot, so like maximum level in this scenario, I think it was fourteen percent. If that's, yeah, fourteen percent would be the maximum an employee can earn extra with this, with no cap. And so that was what I was hoping to discuss today. Any thoughts, feelings on that?
I think quite, kinda like we discussed, I think if somebody has somebody with a PhD and all those things, and they're, you know, a TO, and they can speak Spanish, and they're working night shift, then they sort of deserve the two percent extra. But I think, I think that probably is the cap to me. I don't see much more that we can offer otherwise, unless you have any other ideas.
To offer more for something, I think the biggest thing is like a night shift differential and just as a training officer, and I think everything else is pretty much included.
Sure. Good.
One question I had, we kind of discussed night shift, the, the two percent here. Sheriff was telling me that that, that may need to be a percentage based on the HR program, the payroll program, with Joshua, and I've never used Joshua, I know, but. Tyler, Tyler, Joshua. Some, some, some guy name, I don't know. Tyler, some guy name, I don't see. You know, the, the way we would do a night shift would be a differential to an hourly pay, so that whatever they're clocked into, they're doing that. If we're doing this as an incentive, they're getting a night pay incentive no matter what they work, whether they're working night shift or night shift or not. But we would have them clock into a different pay code and do a differential that way, so that if they're working night shift, they get it, if they're not working night shift, they don't. I didn't know if that was a potential with Tyler, not Joshua.
Maybe Joshua it is.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, maybe, we switched to Joshua. I didn't, but it sounds like Sheriff was saying that needs to be a percentage based to come out of a correct pool of money.
Yeah, I know. Well, as long as it's just easier to receive it that way, so we can enter it into the system, because we want it, I agree, to come out of the writing fund. That's why we request it as a percentage, because either way, we would just have to convert the amount to percentage.
Right.
But we just rather get it from you guys, and you just enter it into the system rather than guessing if you wanna round it up.
Yeah, I don't like rounding.
Well, but then something else we could do is create a new dropdown that's night shift specific by employees. So then if they're doing their night shift, they would need to make sure they select the correct dropdown. So salary, wage, night shifts, and then it would have, we could set it up two ways. We can set it up for the difference because of the night shifts, or we can set it up that they would record it all, kind of like the in excess of twelve hours.
Okay.
A new dropdown for it.
Okay.
So I think that there's definitely opportunity, because I would rather you guys be able to track it after the fact with reporting. So the more we pare down on it, the better your reports will be. So I think there's definitely an opportunity to do something like that for you guys.
I think maybe a dropdown, whatever like you're saying, just because like somebody comes sick or vacation or anything like that, that person's still on vacation or whatever, but they're not gonna pay, get paid that night, time differential.
Correct.
You know, and the person covering, yeah, would get it. So I think doing that, then we could track that better. Yeah, Tyler.
And it's easier for you
Yes, when I'm a.
On the backend, because then we don't have to go backwards and say, oh, you didn't work this day, but you did work that day, but you did work this day. Or if you have someone that switches from night shift to day shift, we don't have to work that out. They just punch you into that code all the time.
Right, yeah. No manual manipulation is really our, our end goal that we're getting into, so. Doable, yes. It's gonna take some setup on the backside, but I think we can accomplish that.
But our, our intention would be to pull that differential from this, this GL code, though.
Yep, yeah.
And that, that would be doable?
That would be doable, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's, that would be ideal, because the way it's written now is we have those two assigned to night shifts right now. But as Paul said, if, if Martha takes a vacation for a week and Paul fills in for that, it'd be nice for Paul to get that night shift differential just for that week she's working in nights.
Right.
And if there's a way to set that up, or that extra money that she makes that night is pulled from this.
The correct GL, yeah.
Okay, so is that something we can sit down and figure out how to make sure it's up? And does that, does it matter? Because obviously we have different pay ranges here, that, that dropdown with that effect, is that like a set pay rate that we would use?
I have flexibility in that, so I can.
So it's kind of a person?
I mean, we'll, we'll need to know what the differential dollar amount is, not a problem, I'm sure. And then we would just be specific to each employee and put the correct rate for each employee that potentially is going to be subject to the night shift differential, yeah.
That makes sense, just because you have to do that right now with everything else that we work.
Exactly.
So do you guys feel it's fair to remove that from as a set percentage to the assignment?
Yeah, we can do that as a, as a per hour differential versus an incentive as a percentage. I would not rather do it that way. I think it'd be a lot easier on the backend for all that, and easier for the employees.
Awesome, that's what we want.
Yeah, hold all amounts are fine, it's just the backside of things, we do percentages, so, you know, but, yeah.
Cool.
We'll take that off.
Any other thoughts or questions on the incentive? Anybody in the room, please, if you guys?
So I have concerns about your numbers for your FICA and Medicare. So FICA actually, that term is inclusive of both Social Security and Medicare, so just an FYI. FICA should be changed to Social Security, just the word. But these, are you using these numbers for your budgeting? Because those numbers do not represent your liabilities on the six hundred and sixty two thousand.
Okay, sorry, yeah, so I'll clarify that. That was a question that I think you brought up also. The, the far right column, the six sixty two, is, is, is prob, prob, I can probably remove that. Since we're talking two different pools of money, we're talking the incentive totals is coming out of our incentive budgetary, budgetary item, the GL code for that. And then the, this, so if you minus the sixteen thousand from the six sixty two, that is the amount that we budgeted for, for total salaries and wages. And then that figure included the proper numbers for the.
For the salaries and wages, so it's intentional that you only wanna know what your liabilities are on the incentives.
Correct, yeah. For the incentives, correct.
Okay, just have it mature.
Yeah, that would be significant, yeah.
Yes, alright.
It's accounted for, yeah, yeah, good question. Yeah, it'd probably be best, honestly, to remove that. I think I put that in there initially just to put eyes on, you know, what we're looking at, but it doesn't really matter, honestly, so. Cool. Thoughts, questions?
I didn't account for Zoom boxes.
All right, yeah, so what this one is mainly for, again, you guys with payroll and HR. This goes back to the percentage talk that, that we discussed, so I wanna make sure that we're on the same page here. That, this, if this top five, six rows or so represents the year's total, we can't see all those on our screen. I wonder if we can maybe minimize it a little. Oh, there we go. So with a little bit of history, so we have our twenty twenty four numbers, so we can skip over to twenty five, what we budgeted for, for that person, we just use Daniela as an example. Then, then with the beginning of the year, COLA increase. The July seventh one, which we'll jump, jump into a little more to explain that, is the, the step increase for her year of experience. The incentives that are included, this incentive totals, what that would look like at the beginning of the year and then at, in the mid-year too. Since it's percentage based, it will adjust as the salary, base salary increases. And if you, can you scroll that bar back up a little bit for me, please? So the new years are where we're at now. If we just kinda skip to where it says salary GL code percentage and incentive GL code percentage, this is what, what I've put together is what would be good for you guys, and correct me if I'm wrong here. So we have the, the one one twenty five total for that first, first one is fifty eight thousand six hundred and eighty two dollars and twenty seven cents. And so for us to say we want fifty five thousand six hundred and twenty three dollars of that to be paid out of salaries, that comes to ninety four point seven nine percent. And then the other five point two one percent comes out of that GL code for our salaries. And at the end of that, that should give us constant tracking of where we're at with our salaries, or with our incentive and salaries separated, even though it's one total. Does that work for you guys?
Yeah, what you sent worked beautifully.
Does it? Okay, this is the same thing then?
Yeah.
Okay. And so, and then for the board also and Paula to see this breakup, this is basically after working with you know, the three in this room right now to come up with what works best for your systems and to confirm that works. And then that's why this is broken up that way. And so, reason why the percentages are weird, Sarah, Sarah and I were buddy heads trying to figure out what, what's going on here, we're, you know.
I only broke his computer.
Yeah, yeah, she, she did break my computer. But if we go back to like the incentive is five point five percent, why is it five point two one percent? It's because we're working with a higher total now, so that's why it looks funky, but it lines up.
The math works.
The math works, sometimes. Any questions on that? No?
Yeah, because you can use the base. I know, multiplication.
Yeah.
It does make sense.
Carry the two, all that. All right, yeah.
It, it makes sense eventually. The first time I saw it, I was like, what is this? This is not.
I forgot to hit send.
Okay, so what, what this is, again, Sheriff's Office stuff carrying over into dispatch, I'm totally open for new ideas and thoughts. I do bring this with Jeremiah today to say this is, I feel like a good starting point for us. Something we can potentially just say we adopt for twenty twenty five, we did budget for this for twenty twenty five. And as we continue out through this year, if we want to change this, we can. I think, I, I really don't wanna get too held up on this to slow down initiating our COLA increase for twenty twenty five too much so. And also when it comes to where we're at with how long people have been employed here compared to what we have set up here, we have another year to kinda look things over. So, again, some history here, so pulling back numbers from twenty three, what the salary ranges were in these different positions. Twenty four, what they were, and twenty four, we did a pretty good jump to seven percent to try to play some catch up there. And in twenty five, we've looked at a three percent and just threw a three percent COLA increase all the way out to twenty twenty nine with it, which kind of lines up with our long range budget plans that we have created last year. The, the step program represents an annual increase. It's kind of a pain to manage, but it has been set to do, the, it's not lined up with the calendar year essentially. It's set up to line up with a January first, not January, July first, excuse me, so a kind of a mid-year deal. Part of the intention was to offer employees a potential of two increases throughout the year, so at the beginning of the year would be, represent COLA. And then the midpoint of the year would represent your year of experience in that position as a step increase. And part of the policy that needs to be developed still with these step increases is exactly what are we looking for to qualify for that step increase. So there, there is some association with performance. If there's, you know, if somebody is on a performance improvement plan, or they're receiving disciplinary actions, things like that would remove them from that ability to step up. So we want to acknowledge not just the years of experience, but that it was a useful year, year of experience where there was some growth in that position. I think it's fair to even call it a promotion, that you're promoting within that position as you're increasing experience. So even though you're not promoting from communication officer to communication supervisor, a step three communication officer has more experience than a step one or two, so it's kind of an internal promotion. So that's where the idea of this really was established. What you'll see is each one of those steps is a three percent increase. So from, from step one to step two is three percent, et cetera. And it's not a set percentage from that probationary period to step one, it's a lower amount. So discussionary things today is is really, you know, one, just that general, the general idea of this program, if there's any other ideas that we feel like we need to implement for this year, or we continue this into our twenty twenty five meetings for discussion. But yeah, any initial thoughts on the program in general?
This is only the COLA, this is not the July.
Correct. Yes, so July, so yeah, so the.
Your step.
Yeah, so the incentives would be evaluated at the step promotion time.
So somebody comes in April, finish the, finishes their thing, ju, their training. But they haven't completed six months, so they don't get the seven, the, the July, right?
Right.
That's how you're thinking.
Yeah, I, I.
Then you wait until the next year to.
Correct, that's where the FTO probation, that period is in there.
Yeah, that's.
Because it's, it's post that as well, I was assuming it was, correct, making sure. Yes, so it, it's after they finish their probation period and we say that they're good to go, then it would be that next year. So if they came in kind of at a weird time of the year, oh, well, and then they get that next year, so that's not, you know, you get that at two months, yeah.
I just wanted to clarify that one, yeah.
Yeah, no.
Because that's what I was thinking.
Correct.
But they would still be subject to the COLA increase in January based on the same scenario, so they're out of FTO at that point.
Correct, yes, yeah.
So they would still.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
But you could still start them off with that step one anyway with that three percent.
If if they were new, then it would be still the FTO probationary period, depending on when they start or at what level. Like if they came in with experience, we've acknowledged that's something too to discuss is. We've offered people higher step increases if they, uh, you know, we've had people who used to be dispatchers even here for two years and we'd start them off at a step two.
But yeah, step one would be completing.
That fifty, the fifty-six ninety-sixes, your starting pay. And then you go after six months and then the following years when you get that three percent to add plus in July.
Right. And some of the other ideas we brought up is extending that out. Um, you know, is this something, do we wanna lower the percentage of step increase and make it a ten-year, fifteen lifetime? And I bring in some, you know, the thoughts of that come from my military experience where it's like in the military, it's every year. Um, you get that. It's and 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 my memory of it is uh it was it was just an automatic thing. You got a year and you went up to this step and it's a more complex pay chart. Um, but you know, we're we're really in that five-year range. We have uh one of our dispatchers who's been a dispatcher for over five years now, right? It's over five for Sarah.
Mm-hmm.
So she's kind of tapped out now. So so somebody who's tapped out, this current setup would just kind of uh, you know, once a year with the hope of we can afford a COLA increase. They would receive that, but there's no more increases within that position. So again, something I don't think we really need to decide on today, but I think we should start thinking about that for long longer-term retention.
I have a question for you guys. What do you guys see as an increase in benefits each year? Do you know what I mean? Like each year, do you guys see an increase of um our.
Been been talking about the benefits side of things. So that increase, is it compatible to two percent COLA or is it more average?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, um. It's been changing. Um, in my time here, we did absorb it this year. The county did absorb the extra eleven percent or something like it was. Um, by project, once it's gonna be.
It was eleven percent from last year.
It was an average.
Yeah, that's a that's a margin increase, yeah.
That's significant. Well, and I do know that we are going to market this year to see if we can get. So what we can tell you right now is we don't know.
Yeah.
We're going to market and then we will be able to give you more realistic ideas of future numbers.
Yeah.
Cause I'm like, just like.
Even from past, just, you know.
Yeah, so we.
What year, guys, does it increase? Has looked like.
Right, so it's increases. Yeah.
Further.
Yeah.
Employment. We make no increase change to either the employer employer side of deductions or benefits. Twenty-four to twenty-five, they're identical.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good to know. Um, you know.
Yeah.
But a one percent is huge. So.
That is huge.
Yeah, um, right. As far as the steps, uh, at least for the uh the normal dispatching positions, Paula, I'd love to see you come up with those steps. And make them substantial. And what they, yeah, what they need to get that step increase.
Increase.
You know, step one obviously is graduate probationer is graduate FTO. But then two, three, four, five.
What is that?
I see that as pretty substantial to be able to get those. It can't just be, I've worked here for five years and I've gotten five step increases. It's gotta be, I'm meeting certain metrics, I need to be certain things, I need to be certain.
Criteria in that.
You know, and and they have to do that, plus a good evaluation to be able to get that step increase. So we're getting some productivity on the two. It can't just be, I've been here for years, so I get a step increase. So I think the boards should probably go on to the supervisor and the director ones.
Yeah.
To me anyways.
Yeah.
But I think Paula, if you can, the dispatcher ones, um, to what what things you have to meet to get each step would be our project and what you take on.
And eventually kick that responsibility to the director for the supervisor, correct, by expectations, but as it's vacant, we can do that.
Correct.
Yeah, one thing that's off a little bit that I'll point out is the uh the director in twenty twenty-five. You can see I just wrote in and said it was, we just reset the salary range to what we thought was appropriate. Um, for a director role position. And then so that's why that's that way. But then after that, the. Three percent's listed throughout. Any other thoughts or questions on the the step deal for this year?
It looks good.
Get us through this year. Alright. Uh, so to continue on with the incentive and retention pool of money, uh, we budgeted for uh forty thousand dollars this year. And if you can recall back to the uh the chart that we had in place before, we were spending about half of that on the incentives. The goal with it is to utilize the incentives first and and to for for good reasons. We want uh to incentivize people who are doing more than the job description requires. They're offering more assistance to us. That's that's that. We want people that they're close to, you know, learning the Spanish language and passing the test. Then we're encouraging that as first, let's use that first. And then the re- the remaining funds, the idea of that forty thousand is use it all. And so whatever is remaining, we give back at the end of the year as a as a bonus. Um, and then again, this stuff adopted from the sheriff's office, happy to change it, is uh just kinda play around with that. We use it as a monthly bonus for the end of the year. And it's based off of your full months of employment for that year. Um, so if you have somebody who's hired in December fifteenth of that year, they're not gonna receive anything. Um, if they're hired in the middle of November, they'll get one month worth worth. Uh, if they're there for the whole year, they get twelve months worth. And so this this chart is a simple one, just to play around with what that monthly bonus could potentially look like. And so we pre-entered a number. So based off of our projections for twenty twenty-five out of the incentive pool, we have about half of that to use. At the end of the this year for the end of the year retention bonus. And this is roughly what it would look like. Uh, put nine in there for the vacant positions in hopes that we can hire up those positions three-quarters of the year into it. The total cost would be on the far right column there to represent what each person receives. And then um, I forgot to include the uh. Um, the additional costs associated with that again. So this now, so I guess question back to what I asked earlier is uh are bonuses used for um um retirement also? Okay, so we.
Give cards are used for retirement essentially. So anything that you are paying is going to be subject to that absolutely.
Okay. 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 Okay, and we include that math in here too, which would give us that use of the forty thousand dollars. So again, this is just an example, but a pretty close example of what the potential of this year.
Yeah, so really seventeen going to employees becomes twenty that extra to pay, right?
Correct, yeah, yeah. So it kind of balances this out pretty close to that fourteen range, gives us give or take. Um, so this this is and this is the reason why we want to use that separate GL code for the incentives. So by the end of the year, we can say, okay, we have twenty-three thousand dollars left. Let's see what how, you know, what this equates to to give back at the to each employee at the end of the year. And so that's why I'm excited that we're finally figuring out how to get all that in there. So totally my fault. I'm delaying figuring that out. Appreciate you guys' patience. But um, so any thoughts or questions on on fully executing that incentive and retention pool?
No, I think if we can, this is great. I think if there's years that were, you know, tighter can't for whatever reason, then you know, oh, well, at least we have to have something to pull from. But I think if we can, that's a that's a great idea.
Looks good.
Yeah.
Starting point. Alright. And uh, it's back to that, we don't have to click back, but back to that last slide, what I've done in prior years is uh just basically essentially submitted this to you guys. To to issue out that end of the year bonus. Is this a fair way of communicating that to you guys? So at the end of the year. Um, and maybe we can add in the GL code just so you know where to pull that from.
GL code would be great. Um, for an extra line on that, the way you submitted the bonus information for year on this year worked beautifully. So.
Yeah. Okay, we'll just add the GL, yeah.
Yeah, add the GL.
Yeah.
Right, adding the adding the extra cost here. So we're saying, and then add a GL code for them.
And we're good.
So we can. Yep.
Yeah, so I came up with like thirteen hundred dollars in taxes and then your six percent.
Yeah.
It's like another thousand dollars. Those numbers seem low, but that's what my machine says. My adding machine. Um, so you're, you know, fifteen hundred, twenty-five hundred dollars. Yeah.
Which lends us right about twenty.
Correct.
So just an estimate, but it it it's pretty close, like for us to say this is this is what twenty twenty-five might look like.
You took it out on the front end, didn't you, right? With the total of the forty thou? You took it out on that breakdown.
No, just for the incentives. So the incentives was about this amount. So I only pulled it from the incentives, not 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 the forty thousand total.
Not the total, not the, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. No, yeah, we didn't want to add it, add it in. Okay, thanks. Yeah. Um, and this just kinda brings in to picture the uh the totals. Um, so like in twenty twenty-five for our salaries, we uh budgeted for that six fourteen cents seventy-one. Yeah, well, there's one thing. Oh, the uh one thing I wanted to point out here was we did budget for an overtime increase in twenty-six and beyond for s- and I don't recall why, to be honest. Um, you know, we have fifty thousand budgeted for in twenty twenty-five. Um, but as staff increases, hopefully overtime decreases as we're able to fill those. Those, a lot of those vacancies in. So just something that I thought I'd point out on this chart. This is something that we pulled from our long-range uh planning. And uh, the other the other thing I uh I'd wanna double check on this chart is um, I think the FICA Medicare, the retirement and unemployment are being pulled from that salary number.
I was just gonna say they're not mapping.
They're not mapping, yeah. So the.
I was curious about those all.
Yeah, we we accounted for those in the incentive and bonus. So I don't think we need to remove that, but I think I need to move the overtime up. And so we're, I don't think we budgeted for those numbers according to uh uh with the overtime included.
Hmm, okay, yeah, because when I'm running the numbers, I'm coming up with forty thou- forty-seven thousand twenty-nine should be your FICA total for both your FICA and Medicare line. For the six hundred and fourteen thousand and the forty thousand incentive. So I have, so to me, I'm not sure it's including the forty thousand and for sure not the fifty.
Yeah, so what we wanna do is include the fifty onto the six fourteen.
And make sure that your spreadsheet is also taxing that this incentive.
And not. Yeah, and and we're taxing the incentive within the incentive.
Oh, that's apples and oranges and it's gonna match your spreadsheet. You'll have to take those out.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'll have to double check that. It's just something to to.
Yeah.
Right, so yeah, anything that's paid has to be subject to those.
Right.
So you want.
So we have to, and being paid out has to be included in that one number and then broken down.
Yeah, honestly, I think the only thing that's missing is the overtime.
Right, yeah, if you break it out and then the numbers definitely have that, but all the numbers are different.
Yeah. Most of it's gonna come out different. Is salary, yeah.
That's what you said.
Most spreadsheet manipulation is super simple, though.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so again, thanks for being here, guys. This is really helping us. Uh, is that the last one?
That's awesome.
Okay. Well, uh, any other thoughts or questions on getting this rolled out for twenty twenty-five? Um, I know we have some work to do in our future budgeting years. And uh, I guess what we need to consider is if we wanna go back to the um, the second page, I think, or, yeah. This is, um, I guess the next one. This is what I'd really like to get approved today. Um, if the board's comfortable with this. Um, so we can submit the payroll change forms uh for the current employees. And so basically, this is that middle chart that we're looking to approve today. Um, this would include the incentives, the twenty twenty-five COLA. So it's including both. I'll make a motion to approve. One second. Uh, any further discussion? I hear no further discussion. All in favor of improving approving the twenty twenty-five COLA incentive for current employees? Aye.
Aye.
Alright, so we'll get that rolled out, get that submitted to you guys. Um, it's not a lot, but we can still do it in the chart format if that works for you guys. Uh, on one sheet or individual payroll change forms for all five?
I think you, I think I could do them for all five.
Do you have a preference?
It breaks my heart when we're not consistent. So if you don't mind doing the individual, I I took this spreadsheet for myself, but if you would.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. No, no. Yeah.
If you would.
Yeah.
Well, that was twenty-five, I ended, which I did print out twenty-five.
Yeah, but then there's that paperwork to back out too.
And that's just it. I put it in every single e- employee profile, like in that way, it's.
That has to be.
Okay. We'll do, yeah, individual and.
Yes, please, thank you.
Alright, I appreciate everybody's input on that. Alright, move on to item B is discussion and consideration of the Lake County E nine-one-one authority. Uh, job director, director job description and recruitment strategy, really by Chief Trelka and Director Grant.
Alright. I, I mean, I I got the latest copy of the job description and I think it looks great.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
The the job direct job description I have been problem with. Um, and Sheriff and I kind of discussed it while we were discussing this kind of stuff. I, the only thing I see to add to the posting would be some sort of bonus or moving incentive or something to try and get some of the, I don't know. I mean, we didn't post it with anything last time. We just posted with the old salary and nothing else. We got zero bites on it, zero legitimate bites on it.
Yeah, I uh I communicated with people that I thought would be interested and there's sadly no interest.
Everybody I've talked to as well that's in a position to take that job already has the job they want.
Everybody I talked to is retired and they don't want it.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, so I I think, I mean, if, you know, we kind of talked about it and if we're gonna approve it in March anyways to work with. K.
K R W.
K R W, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, then there's not really a harm in posting it now with some sort of bonus to me. Let's see, maybe I can see that we might get some bites on it. Um, you know, leaving it up for a month, I don't see any harm in that. Leaving it up for six months or a year, see harm in, but leaving it up for a month and then signing healthcare W, I don't see a ton of harm in.
I agree.
Are you guys caught up on the situation at all? I think mainly.
Sorry, I should have been a little explaining first.
Yeah, no, I know, you know, you're the HR master here with with this with this stuff. And I don't know if you're caught up on what we've done. Do you wanna explain that to Karina a little bit?
For sure, yeah. So we we had posted um the director position last year. Um, and then I think it it went out to a bunch anyways. I don't know, it was like the way you guys used to to send it out. But we had literally zero bites on it on that director position with the old salary. So we're just trying to find some way of getting more bites with that.
Yeah.
And trying to, trying to find somebody. We jumped with Care W, um, they wanted to wait till more summertime. Um, so we're thinking if we approve that in March for them to go into it after April, that um, that that may work better as a spring, summer sort of thing for them to get candidates. Um, but we kind of talked about maybe posting it now so that but at least maybe something in between, we get some sort of bite in between it. But I don't know if that's, the main question with that is if we post it and then take it down and then they post it, does that sort of harm their ability with our candidates? I don't, I don't know.
Um, I think we can open it just so we have uh additional candidates. Um, the way that our portal works is that we can add a candidate very easily. So if they already applied, say, um, they apply now, we can pass that information out to them.
Okay.
Um, and it's pretty easy to do online. Um, and then what I can do is also add the the bonus stuff, um, specifically to your needs. Um, so that's a possibility too. And then other language, I know we've been having like that in English too.
Sure.
Um, cause I don't, yeah, I just laughed at it because last year, so.
Right. Yeah, we're gonna move up the up the pay range, which is appropriate. Uh, what do you feel is a decent bonus on that? I had ten K in mind, but is that a bunch, do you think? For a director of the position?
Yeah, I would have to check the numbers on my end. Um, but yeah, I would say it can be flexible.
Okay.
Um, I know we've done like a background in the past, which is very different, right?
Hmm.
Correct, right, yeah.
Um, for different positions, so.
Right, and that's and that's my point is like, where does it become worth it to be able to do it, right? Is is somebody gonna care about five hundred dollars or is it gonna make a difference?
Yeah.
So are we gonna get better candidates with a better bonus out of better, like, markets are weird right now.
It is weird. I mean, it could open up where we, I mean, I'm been impressed with the number of people interested in being a dispatcher. But uh, I'm kind of surprised that there's a lack of interest in this position.
Sure. Or do you have any tips or tricks of things that we can.
I I just did a quick Google search and according to Google, Black Hawk did a thirty-five hundred dollar signing hiring incentive for their. Communications dispatch supervisor. And in Denver, signing bonus was four thousand, paid out over two installments.
Okay.
So just.
So have you had maybe four, five, more of a range, you know, something like that? But I, would you have any other things that we can?
And I know.
Yeah, we can look at specific job boards around the E nine-one-one or get it posted. Yeah, we can look at specific job boards around the E nine oh one, or get it posted, um, changing all counties nearby. Um, I'm currently looking into doing that with county manager position, um, so that's still a possibility too.
You mean like through their paper or how?
Yeah, through their paper, they have like online magazines and displayed classified ads, they're currently, um, so. I don't have options.
Is KRW a recruiting program?
Yeah, that's who, um, let's say the city used to, get to Trelka actually.
Oh, okay. Gotcha, right.
So we made a great discussion with them as well, uh, but they really felt like, it was separate that we had a discussion with them?
Yeah.
They really felt like waiting until spring or summer was gonna be way better than over the winter for weather conditions, uh, I don't know, I'm of the mind that if they're gonna have to live here in winter anyways, it doesn't matter, but, yeah, they were, they were very serious about, no, we should wait till spring, we'll get more candidates in spring and summer, we can get people up here to see the town.
Right.
In the good conditions, it'll, it'll be better, and we're like, okay, we trust you on that one, so.
We can trick them.
Correct.
That's good.
Yeah, that's why we got you, yeah.
That's.
Yeah.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's kind of what I'm thinking, is if you bring someone in the spring or summer and they make it through like the really beautiful months.
Sure.
And then they come within eight months of winter and they get that bonus, it builds it up.
Built a lot to stay.
Sure, yeah, that's, that's a real good one.
Yeah.
Real good one for sure, it's.
Beautiful and bonus, yes, that's it.
Beautiful and bonus, I like that.
Okay, so then, then, yeah, I guess that would be fine, post reposting the position with as many as we can, with some good ideas, at a four to five thousand dollar.
Mm-hmm.
Boss.
Yeah, maybe, maybe installments and then, so we did, uh, you know, last year we approved spending, I think it was twelve or fourteen thousand.
That was twelve to begin with, we got, we're gonna have to pay more, but.
Maybe a little more, but we budgeted for KRW, so re- recruitment efforts, and that's the, that's where the bonus idea is coming from, like maybe if we tried it again on our own with a new salary range, a slightly reworked job description, uh, to include a bonus, and then we hire, then we don't have to use KRW. Um, and then maybe if we, you know, I think, I think reaching out to surrounding counties is a great idea, you know, Summit County has posted in our paper, uh, which I went through and shredded all of them, so, I'm just kidding. And but, but I, you know, we can post a Summit Eagle, like all our surrounding counties, and spread it, you know, in the papers.
Are they still hiring for that position?
What's that?
Are they still hiring for that position?
Yeah, it was a patrol deputy.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, um, but, yeah, okay. So, so what are, are we good with, uh, pursuing that as, uh, posting the job?
Yeah, I think the job description as is, um, posted with a, I'll do one four or five, what do you think?
Um, I lean towards the five.
Five, alright, yeah.
We need a motion?
I think so.
I'll make a motion that we repost it with a bonus of five thousand dollars.
That's good, uh, second.
Alright, um, right, any further discussion? I'm hearing none, um, vote on, um, reposting the E nine oh one authority job, um, with a new pay scale, new job description and a, uh, five thousand dollar bonus. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, alright. Okay, move on to item C, and, um, I think, happy to keep you guys around, but I think we, if you, uh, wanted to leave, you, you could at this point. But I know this is exciting, so.
I'm so happy that you invited us, thank you.
You're on the edge of your seat.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I was like, I.
That's a, that's a, you, you. I realize us beholding so many people up.
Um, anyway, they'll, they'll take care of you later, don't worry, yeah. Thanks, guys, I really appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, so item C, discussion of the future staffing schedule for the emergency communication center, led by, oh.
Yes, so looking at the schedule, and this has been, um, having eight people on, that we want twenty four center coverage. I was looking at it, and so we only have two workstations that people are, can work off of. And doing that, and looking at the overtime and budget, it just, I want more, how should I say? So we're not eating into the overtime budget so much, how we can manipulate the hours or get a good schedule for eight people to work in a dispatcher.
You want flexibility.
That, and so that, with that, okay, we have two employees that have always had overtime. You know, it, because we do a fourth, four three schedule, so there's always one week that someone's gonna get overtime, eight hours a week. So we cut that in half because the next, the opposite week is thirty six hours, so we have four hours of overtime, that's gonna be accounted for eight people every pay period. So totaling that by everyone's pay who works, that adds up. You know, into our overtime, and it might be a little bit better with the fifty thousand incentive for the overtime, but my thing is to get instead of overtime, maybe a good work schedule with maybe a higher pay.
Sure.
Is what I'm thinking, so with that being said, I was looking at different ways we can do a schedule, whatever, having full time people, and I think it was because you wanted two people on at all times for EMD, right?
I think you, I think even with all EMD, it's just a safer option if we can ever get there, you know?
Um, and, and that's the thing that, you know, dispatchers want it.
Yeah.
They really want it, because it is hard to not get medical advice if you're not trained, and it takes a toll on your mental also.
Totally, yeah.
Because you know that, oh man, I know how to do CPR.
Right.
And if that's, you're holding back, even though you know it, it, it's a very mental thing that you take on as a dispatcher.
Totally, yeah, yeah, I, I, again, I think even beyond EMD, I think it just, it would be able to output a better product when things, you know, when a lot of things happen at once. If you have somebody working on one thing, it's gonna be working on a different thing, it's better than one person working on everything.
Right. Everything, right.
So I think it's, you know, you know, even beyond EMD, I think it's just a better idea to have two dispatchers on at all times.
And I was looking at calls by day, by where our har- hour, our high call volume is. Um, I printed out that, um, calls by hour end date. If you guys wanna look at it, of where we're at, like, on our Sunday Mondays, it looks like, honestly, our Sundays and Saturdays are a little bit lower, the volume. And, you know, just looking at that and where we're at, you know, and different schedules, maybe some would like to work tens, maybe some would like to work twelves. We can do that, you know, by not having that overtime, but at least giving them a higher pay. You know, because a lot of them do like having three, four days off, and it does help when you're working twelve to have those days off. Twelves are, are a hard schedule. You know, so looking at that, I just want a food for thought for you guys, you know, um, I don't mind coming up with a schedule, what it looks like, we're not there fully staffed, but we do have Mariana who started, and then we have Kate who's in the process right now, who will probably get an offer letter next week. And so, and then we have another one, another person in the works, so we're getting there, we're, this is gonna happen sooner than later. So, just to be ahead of the game, I'd rather be ahead of the game than trying to figure it out last minute. So, that's my food for thought for you guys, how you like to see it, what your thoughts are.
I like the idea of the, the four tens for the, for them also, um, provides some overlap, provides training opportunities, um, we can, yeah, provides a day where we can have some, some adjustment. But I thi- I think we need to, um, lower that twelve hour shift just for health reasons, um, and then also it would reduce our overtime budget. Um, needs, um, yeah, do you guys get, have you looked at the schedule, do you know what they're doing right now?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah, I just must have the times changed.
Did, like the, yeah.
Four forty five is ten, it's awful, I can't imagine having to come in or leave at four forty five.
And that's. And the only reason why we have that is because shift change with the other ones, with everybody else.
Totally, yeah, yeah.
You know, we were trying to, like, everybody doing shift change out at once was kind of hard.
Totally, yeah.
Dispatch, because they're calling on, calling off.
Right.
Right.
You know, so we could always do it a half hour early, a half hour later, you know?
Or if you, if you staggered when people were coming in, especially on ten hour shifts, you probably have to do that to keep, you know, you keep them on anyways, have someone coming at eight, have someone coming at ten.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Right.
Have someone leave at whatever, I've seen that, so you just stagger your shifts a little, a little, uh, is that that?
We could stagger that with, just looking at it, though, we have two consoles, so we can't, we have to stagger it as to only two people are on at the time or not, yeah.
Totally, yeah, yeah.
Just, um, with that, you know, but I'm leaning more towards tens also, you know, and, um, giving them as much time as possible that is needed.
Sure, yeah, they lose their four days off at that point, but I think a better shift would make up for that for sure.
Yeah.
And, you know, get a few hours back to a week, so.
And then my concern is just like, they're used to getting those, that four hours of pay time and a half, or that's, you know what I mean, in their pay.
Mm-hmm.
So that's what I was looking at also.
Yeah.
And how if we, if we manage to get most of the overtime taken care of, then maybe we can add
Right.
some money to their pay or something.
Sure.
To not, so they don't feel that they're losing money.
Mm-hmm.
Cause you never wanna take money away from people.
Yeah, we would, like if we swapped to ten hour shifts today, their paychecks would be smaller.
Yes, most definitely, yeah, I would like.
Cause they're automatically getting overtime, every single paycheck has a six note difference.
Yes. And that's what they're used to.
Right.
Right now.
Yeah, if you didn't wear the overtime, that's one thing, changing shifts though, you just change pay rates to make up for that, then they're gonna make, you know, they're gonna, you know what they're gonna make for here, you just,
Right, yeah.
Right, and that's what I'm saying.
you know, change what they're gonna make per hour to make up for that, so they lose out on the overtime, but that's what's best for the department.
But that's okay, though, right?
At that point, right, yeah, but they don't lose out on any actual pay, just because they changed shifts.
Yes. Yes, that's what I'm, that's what I was saying, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so we just change pay rates at that point, and then they come up with the same thing.
Mm-hmm. But I just wanted to bring that to you guys' attention, because as we get there, it's gonna be sooner than later.
Sure.
Mm-hmm, I'm sure.
And if that's gonna affect what we just did.
Yeah, yeah, um, I, I mean, I would say, uh, ten hour shifts are great, I think if that's what the staff wants and that's what most people are gonna want in this position, and then let's do that, I would say come up with a couple of different options and present that to us next month, two months, how much time do we need?
Um, well, probably in two months, just because I don't know what the radio situation is gonna look like.
Totally, yeah, yeah, and it's not, I, we're not gonna be fully, fully staffed in the next few months here anyways, so I'm fine with two months, so.
Right. When they're out on their own off of MTO, but we will have them.
Take a while, yeah, so April, April meeting would be good?
You know? April, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so if you could come up with a, you know, full on presentation, bring us some options that we can see and look at, uh, and then go from there. Everybody, you know?
That helpful for you, Paula, is that the main point you were talking about today?
Yeah, I was trying to see what you and Stas were, and what, you know, yeah, I have my thoughts on that.
Yeah, no, I think you have your head of ground on that one, so I'm not gonna, you know, I, again, the board isn't here to tell you what's the new day to day necessarily, so, um, or it shouldn't be anyways, we're kinda hard at the moment, but, um, shouldn't be anyways, so I, I think, you know, if, if you and the staff have some ideas on, on what that's gonna best look like, um, especially moving forward into the future, that we're gonna be able to better recruit, better retention, you know, and better keep people with a better schedule, but, so, yeah, bring us a few options and what you guys are thinking about from there?
Alright, sounds good.
Alright, anything else, Paula?
Um, not after that, no, I was just gonna do my report.
Related to? Okay. Okay, yeah, we're.
When you get to that.
Yep, we'll have, um, yeah, so we'll move on to, um, IMD's updates and discussions on current operations and topics, and this is where we split up a lot of the director roles and responsibilities amongst us, uh, to help manage until we get a director, um, and so, Paula, you're, you're, you have a piece in each part of this, so speak up if you feel related to any of these topics, if, if that's a good way to break out your report, and if you have, and if we get to the end and we miss something that he wanted to talk about, please do. And I should have included you earlier on, so I apologize for that. Um, Chief Daly's leading the, the training aspect, not here today, um, anything on the training you'd like to bring up?
Yes, training, he has contacted Daniela and, uh, Mary, they're in the process, we have all of the, I sent all of our training stuff to Summit so they could look at it, and what we're finding is that it's so redundant, that training, that we're looking to revamp that and make it more, gosh, I say more, that they're getting the training that they need and not having so much redundancy in it. So revamping that, and the training, um, I signed up Mary and Daniela to go to CTO training in Avon.
Mm-hmm.
Which I think is awesome.
When, did you say?
This is in July.
Okay.
Instead of, uh, the, I couldn't get them into the one in Colorado Springs, but this one works out better, they can go and come back home.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there, so, um, I got them signed up for that.
This, this communication training officer?
Yes, I have them, I would like to train, go with that too, if that's possible.
Yeah.
I'd like to see what they're training on, you know?
But if we can, if we can bring out Mary, Mary and Daniela, and you can trust them at some point to run things while you're gone, then we can do that for sure.
Yes. Yeah, and, and, well, the good thing is it's in Avon, so it's, it's, you're not that far, you know, you can come home, no, three days.
That's good, that's good.
It's been a week. Three days, okay.
Yeah, it's three days, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Paul, it's not too bad, I was like, I was like, two weeks, right?
Yeah, no, no, it's three days, yeah, so, um, I have them already signed up for that, for the training.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I think Chief was going to the one in Springs, I don't know, I let him know already that I signed him up for the one in Avon, so.
Okay.
I'm not too sure what he did with that, but I let him know.
I'm not sure either.
And, um, as far as that, I, we're just all working together to get the training program and see what it looks like and how we can have a better training program and see if we need twelve weeks of where we're at with individuals.
Sure.
And do a modified one also for people who have
Mm-hmm.
some tr- some experience in dispatching already, so.
Okay. That's good news, I'm glad we're working with Summit. Anything else on the training front?
Um, um, actually, yeah, I applied for a grant and I got a thousand dollars for training.
Nice, nice. That's helpful, hold on.
So.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, and I'm gonna use that for the training for them for CTO.
Okay, good.
And we'll receive that money next week.
That's good.
So, that's another training.
Was that going to go something specific or?
Um, it was through CHPE, actually.
I think like, what did you like, is it going towards something specific or?
For training, I asked for training.
Okay.
Or training, like, any kind of CTO training, or EMD training, any kind of training.
CTO. Oh. Sure, you didn't have to put something speci- specific on the application, it's just, that's rare, usually they wanna be like, what is the thing?
Nope. Yeah, no, I just, I put training, but I was specific as to what kind of training.
Prove to me that this. Yep.
So, yeah, so we got a thousand dollars for that.
Alright.
Yes.
Great. You feel comfortable with the management of that, what it requires, pretty simple one?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's a very simple one, so, yeah, no worries.
Um, we just need to make sure it's added to the budget correctly and then taken out of budget correctly.
Yeah.
Right, to deposit, yeah, and how we can disperse it, yes.
That might be.
Yeah. Yeah, cool.
Got it.
Yeah, if you just communicate that with our HR finance.
Yeah.
It's very loop.
Yep, I just found about it, found out about it yesterday, so.
Yeah, no, on, on our, our P and L, it has an income, there's, we have a grant line item.
Line item.
That we can, we can blow out a different one, so if we can do that with ours too.
Yeah, and I know that there's, and they're asking for different things for grants and stuff, so I'll get with them and make sure that we're all on the same page and it's putting correctly and how we use it is, yeah, so.
Yeah, it looks like science.
Alright, anything else on the training?
For training, well, I don't know if there's so much training of, or what I'm doing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I am accessing training that we never had before for dispatchers through our CCIC, NCIC, through practice modules. And all our flex modules that we can go in and practice, which we've never had before, never utilized, so I got that all going
Okay, good.
for trainings for people, so. And I think, um, that's it for the training though.
Okay. I'll move on to, uh, staff recruitment and retention. Led by these two gentlemen, the updates outside of the gym.
No, we've been doing regular interviews, sounds like we're all on the same page with one applicant that recently applied. Um, do you have any other potential candidates we're going to be interviewing?
Um, no, not yet, not yet, I, um, there was one that had applied, but it kinda went to patrol. She was a lot more well suited for patrol.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So, um, and I think he is.
Yeah, I think she's still maybe on either side, depending on what she wants out of her life, so.
Yeah. Yeah, and, um, give it that.
Yes, still potential.
How many vacant positions do we have right now, two?
That's what I was asking.
So, I, we have one in a conditional offer and one who started, so conditional offer, she takes that after everything she's passed and we'll have two for dispatchers.
Hmm, mm-hmm. Okay, and then still one supervisor, one contractor, so four total, or two overall?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we had a young lady apply that, from what, California, the Grand Canyon lady. She took the job of Loveland, which is disappointing, why, that's, that's the way it is, she'll regret it.
Definitely.
I guess that's all we had on staffing and recruiting, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, the, the interviews are gonna go great, I think it's, it's nice to have some input in that and, uh, and be involved in that, so it's awesome.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
I appreciate it, totally, and your guys' input and stuff like that, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
But, yeah, it sucked to, sucked to lose out on her, Michelle, Michelle?
Yes.
Yeah.
But to lose out on Michelle, that, I think that would've done really, really well, but, yeah, well, wasn't meant to be.
I did talk to her, though, I'd just say, hey, have you ever changed your mind?
Alright. Right.
Totally, yeah, yep, so, yeah.
You know, we're still, we're still here.
Right, yeah, and I think that's.
She's gonna be busy, that Loveland woman's.
Like, that's not a bad thing, if, yeah, if she goes up there and changes her mind for some reason, then we're, I'll be a fallback, I'm afraid, yeah. Um, yeah.
Anything else on that side of things?
Nothing.
Alright, move on to policy, um, Jeremiah, did you have a chance to look over the IPOS policy that Claire sent? Okay, um, we can just. Leave it at, uh, it's in the packet, um, it'd be good to review and start, um, throwing in some ideas, Paula, did you see that too?
I didn't see that, I don't know why, I don't know if I got that, I always always see agenda.
Okay. Okay, so it's in the, it's in the packet, uh, Claire developed a, um, a draft policy here, um. Looks pretty good after the first reading, there's a few things to, uh, check off, if you wanna scroll down a little bit, I think she left some notes in there for us to look into, I think a couple of other things would be, um. You know, how silver and amber alerts are sent out, um, and training suggestions that you have, Paula, um, for Everbridge stuff to be qualified. And, and what the policy does is it identifies who, who can use it, who can approve it, um, it's all listed out in this, um, the training requirements. I think, um, as a starting point, this is a great, great starting point, a couple of things to work on, like I said.
And there's some laws that are changing, that are coming down with IPOS and all that.
Well, I have to keep a close eye on that.
In July.
In July, yeah, so we might wanna think about those, whatever that may be, and making sure that we're not, um, shooting ourselves in the foot with this policy with what potential law changes, and. If we can account for it or whatnot, but, um, yeah, a lot of it was, um, so, yeah, if you keep scrolling down, there's the, a list of approvers. Um, so it could be anybody on that list, uh, we could talk about that if we wanna add or take away from that. Um, and then kind of using a two-part authentication process, um, through the messaging to make sure there's no typos, make sure that we're getting the message out, and we have the approver, and. The requestor and all that, so that's what this policy addresses. Um, one of the things we'll have to discuss eventually is the, uh, overall account manager, you know, if it's, if, are we talking, is it gonna be the director of dispatch, I think right now it's, it's under dispatch. Um, but OEM is, um, controlling it to some level, Claire can explain that better. Um, but to make sure that we're on the same page with who, who that overall manager is of the account, uh, it's a couple of things, so. Um, and then there's, and she also has a memo attached to this. To kind of point out some of those key, key parts that we're gonna look at. So, addressed to us and Paula, um, so you guys get a chance to read through this from Claire. If we don't have much to add on to that, other than just, yeah, a little bit homework to do?
Yeah, I don't think so, what are the potential law changes?
I don't know.
There are different questions.
So, um, coming, coming down from, uh, state and stuff, it's how we send out messages.
Sure.
They wanted to be your, like, what's your second language in your county? To send out also, if it's Spanish, then we, we need to send it out in Spanish also.
Okay.
So accessibility stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that is interesting, though, cause either you're making one huge long IPOS, or you're doing multiple, it doesn't get either, interesting, okay.
Yeah, I, I have the law, so I downloaded the House Bill, just to bring it this time, just, cause I didn't wanna get in two weeks with it, but.
Okay. Totally, yeah, is it, is it more how they're sent out, or more what is the substance of the IPOS?
How they're sent out.
Okay, so then that shouldn't.
With English and Spanish, like, that would be hours.
Okay.
Because of the majority of the language, the second language that we spoke with.
Right, is that gonna be the biggest change?
Um, yeah, and it's rewarding also how the House Bill is worded now, and how, um, E nine one one wants it worded as. Because they're grouping things together that probably should not be grouped together.
Okay.
So it won't be final this yet, but it's coming down to the wire where it will be, and I can send that all to you, just so you guys are aware of that.
Yeah.
If you guys wanna, that House Bill.
Thank you. Yeah. Sounds good, so do you wanna, uh, this is for March, or do we wanna wait until that to come out, or?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think we have more discussion in March, um. And then hopefully have a, 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 a proper policy in place by April, that everybody's aware of and knows how to use and train on, what it's about.
And I think, I like the one who has the authority, I think that's our thing, and I think our interpretation of IPOS, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Is how we use it, Everbridge, we see it as citizen alert.
A difference.
Sure.
Instead of IPOS, yeah.
Right.
So, making those just so that our dispatchers know, yeah, this is what you're really accessing, but we call it this.
Right.
Those kinds of things, you know?
Yeah, well, that's where this comes into, is what trainings we're doing based around this, so that nobody's, or everybody's on the same page.
Mm-hmm.
And there's been a lot of trainings coming out and stuff like that, and as soon as I see them, I'm making sure that our dispatchers are taking those trainings, and myself.
Sure.
So that we are up to date on any changes or anything like that.
Yeah, and I agree with Claire here, on, uh, if we can make it like an annual basis, it's something they have to do, like refresh on every single year. And we just make it a, a competency is what we would call it, uh, then that would be appropriate as well.
Because we don't have a whole lot of IPOS leaders coming out.
Totally, which is, yeah, it's, it's a high consequence, low frequency scale, so.
And right with our, uh, amber alerts, silver alerts and stuff like that, that's in our training program now, as to where it was before, so.
Right. Okay.
Those steps coming along.
Mm-hmm. Alright, then we'll move on from policy to project management, um. I don't, I don't have any updates, do you, from project management?
No, nothing besides the incentive, I think, that we did.
Yeah, and then, but, uh, Paula, do you have some notes on like radios and all that stuff, go ahead.
Yes. Our back hall, that should be done on the fourteenth, um, fif, the fif, fourteen, fifteenth, because they need to install.
Yeah.
Um, we needed a. Higher voltage in the room, which that's done, completed, we just need them to come in and install the APC.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay.
Which that's, won't take nothing at all.
I'm sorry, what was the fourteen, fifteen?
To finish the back hall for the DTRs, for us to Grand Junction.
Oh, okay.
Which is the last piece of the puzzle to get our new radios rolling.
Yes. Radios, the MC seven five hundred, yes, mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So, um, that should all be done, I just received in that date, more rule is all informed with everything.
Mm-hmm.
They're up to date on everything that we have and what's going on on Grand Junction side.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, if you guys want me to include you on emails, I know you guys have lots of emails all the time, and you're gonna look at it and be like, I don't even know what it's hiding.
Yeah, I think I know, yeah, I think.
Hide them, yeah.
Okay.
Jeremiah knows.
They're gonna do it on a Friday and Saturday?
Well, I think it was the fourteenth, they said, they said by the fourteenth, so maybe that week of, they're gonna try to get them installed.
The fourteenth. Yeah.
Oh, okay, like you said, cause it was the fourteenth, it's a Friday, I'm like, that's weird, okay, cool.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a state.
Yeah, that, that's, that's why I was like, they're not gonna work on a Saturday, like, that's not gonna happen, so it was almost by the fourteenth.
Yeah. So, we should have that all done, and then Alma Rule has us all where they come in, they're gonna come in at the end of the month, around the last week. And install the MC seven five hundred radios, and then we will do the training for that, um, get that all done. Um, and image trend, I know Chief's not here, but Jeremiah, you are, so we're almost there. We are almost there with image trend, they're, they're testing it, and it almost works. So, hopefully.
To be able to, so that, that's to be able to send the, um.
It's our interface with image trend to flex, just, so that is almost completed, um.
Yeah, okay. Cool.
And I am also working with our Marshall one, for a possible grant for Rapid SOS, and our building outlay to have GeoCom. That whenever we get a nine one one call in, we can see, um, it'll show us where that person is calling, like, say, Kate McGrann, we get a nine one one, where you can know exactly where they're calling from, or apartment.
Mm-hmm.
In the outlet of, outlet of all the apartments and all the buildings.
How does that work?
I've already talked to GeoCom, I thought we had it.
It's magic. So you don't have to call them?
They install it, it's a G I S.
Even if they're calling from a cell phone, you can tell exactly where they are?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
How does that work?
I believe it.
I don't know, but.
Yeah, even at both, I'm like, huh?
Yeah, if anything in a building, they can locate that.
Really?
And I have it already in Rapid SOS, but I didn't realize when I asked for it, and I got the coordinates and everything that we needed to interface with them. So now, yes, it costs money, but I don't think that it's a substantial cost, but that's what, uh, Fire was dealing with, they say, hey, I already talked to GeoCom.
Right.
We could probably do this together, and Fire Marshal was like, yes, just give me a price, so I do have them maybe set up with GeoCom. To get that price for them, and see if that's where we wanna go, if we get the money.
Okay. Sounds good. Is that, that's new, we have to approve that correct?
So.
That's not, that wouldn't, that wouldn't be a budget, oh, oh, okay, I see, so, yeah, yeah, that's a grant.
Through a grant? It's a grant, through the fire department, but to, to collaborate with us.
Sure. Cool, okay.
As dispatch.
Sounds good.
So, um, working on that, hoping just get that done into Fire Marshal one as soon as possible, so, um. I think that is all.
Okay. Um. Maybe I order, order, I know I'm missing one right now, but I'm, my, uh, computer's restarting, so I can't recall the last one, actually, if you don't mind pulling the, uh, agenda, we'll, we can, get that way. Uh, that was the last one, I believe.
Yes, or overstate supervision on budget.
Oh, yeah, supervision, yep, so we can do, yep, so we'll move on to that one, the only note I had on that one, I already talked to Paula about, is keeping an eye on her overtime, since she's doing multiple jobs at once. Um, we wanna make sure that we're not, uh, exhausting our overtime budget in the first quarter of the year, so it's, and it's for your own good too, like. Um, so I already talked to her about making sure, keeping an eye on her schedule, if there's mandatory things that we really need to get done, then we can talk about that, but we're gonna keep a closer eye on Paul's, um, overtime. Uh, that's all I have there, and, uh, Chief gave it to me here, but any thoughts or requests?
With the overtime, um, is what I was thinking also, because I work every Monday, and our holidays are landing on every Monday.
You're covering shift on Mondays?
Okay.
So my thought process to help alleviate that, that you're not paying the highest paid person in the department, that overtime. I switch Daniela's schedule, I'm more flexible with her, give it to her.
Okay.
I will take on another shift throughout the week, so that's one of my plans also, to implement, to alleviate some of that.
Yeah. That's good, um, yeah, there's also, I mean, if you can't throughout the week to, you know, if you can leave early at some point, or. Take a day off if you work a shift at some point, something like that, and, and things will not fall apart, and that's fine, or if you need to do that, and some of these things to get done.
I'm trying, yeah. Right.
That's where you're very much in to, to say, hey, like, this needs to get done, but I'm watching overtime, but I'm, we'll help you kind of manage that as well.
And I'm looking at scheduling most things on Wednesdays and Thursdays, so I, I wouldn't have a heavy day on Wednesdays and Thursdays to get things done.
Yeah, I appreciate doing that, definitely.
Um, budget, we talked a lot about that today, I don't have anything additional to add. Alright, Paula, did we miss anything?
Um, no, I wrote down my stuff here, and, um, for a policy, though, I did talk to Lexa Paul. It's just, um, Lexa Paul is a management tool. For policy, you don't give you policy, so policy is still a top priority. Um, for me to get, and I know that that's hard, because, yes, we could take away from another agency and stuff like that, but there's still work that has to get done.
It's still a lot. Mm-hmm.
Changing things in how we do that, so.
Mm-hmm.
Sure, yeah, I'm like Claire, I mean, now we can help with that too, I don't, I know we just said this several times, but I'm gonna go resolve like to, like, I know.
I have it now, I figured it out, and I have to send you a link and a password, and once you get that, then you will sign up for it, and you can see everything on that.
Okay. Okay, perfect, yeah, that's good.
I'll get that out to you.
Yeah, yeah, but again, if that's the things that like, you know, things that are more pressing, if that needs work on, that you don't have to do, let me, let me, let me.
Right, and right now, I think, once we get everything installed, and we're still working on getting like kinks out of Flex, out of call works.
Totally.
There's, there's things that I've discovered that were never implemented and need to be implemented, as to where our applications and stuff like that, to work better for dispatch.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Right.
And so, I'm working on those, cause I think those things are needed now. You know, we're utilizing applications and stuff like that, but we're not utilizing them to their potential as to where we should have been.
Cool.
So, that's what I'm working on, and seeing that those get done. And, but unfortunately, I have to wait for IT a lot too. So, that's my thing now, and then once we get. Those, and that is, our redundancy is huge for me. Also, in our interoperability to still function when something happens. I never wanna go through that week again, that we went through. So, those are what I see.
Alright, well, that. Close that portion, and we'll, uh, move on to the minutes from January, um, third, twenty twenty five. Any adjustments or comments on that?
Make a motion to approve, I will second, any further discussion?
Hearing no further discussion, uh, all in favor of approving the minutes from January third, twenty twenty five?
Aye.
Alright, uh, next meeting will be March seventh, twenty twenty five, at, uh, ten AM back in this room. So, thanks to everyone and all our efforts to, to get this established, adjourn the meeting, um, eleven thirty eight AM.
I'm never able to get on the wifi here, how do I get on the wifi in the courthouse?
No, we blocked all city, boys.
You need to be the guest.
Try.
Yeah.
Oh, is that where you're at?
Yeah, um, I need, use your name and password, who do I get that from?
Does it require? Tim might know it if he's still on.